Glad to have everybody here tonight. This is the September eighth, twenty twenty five, regular Warren City Council meeting. I ask our city clerk if she will call the roll please.
Councilmember Hooper?
Present.
Councilmember Burks-Freder?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Toffler?
Present.
Councilmember Mosley?
Here.
She's on the phone.
Councilmember Atkins?
Here.
Okay. With Councilmember Mosley on the phone, we've got a hundred percent attendance. She's a little bit under the weather, but we're glad she at least called in where she can listen. And if she has to make any comments she wants to, she can, any issue. But we do have a quorum, so we will proceed. The first item of business, as always, is the approval of our minutes of our past meetings. We've had two, August the eleventh, which was the regular meeting in August, and August eighteenth, the call of meetings.
I know that the minutes for August eleventh and August eighteen be approved as presented to us by Congress. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any question or discussion? We're approving both sets of minutes. Is there any question, discussion, correction to either set of the minutes? We can deal with them individually if there's anything that needs to be dealt with. The motion is to approve both. All in favor, show of hands, please. I see five in favor. Want to vote on that, Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Okay. We'll count her to vote yes also. All right. That brings us to the city clerk's report. The clerk has had this all prepared for you. You've got the statement of revenue and expenditures. I'm gonna go through all of it here very briefly. And then we will, of course, have to act on the first item there. You can see each department. It's got it shaded in yellow as to our expenses as of the end of August of twenty twenty five. You can also see the budget there under that category decided. I'm not gonna go through every one of them. We seem to be holding our own, generally speaking. We'll have to be some amendments later in the year, but right now, we're hanging in there. If anybody's got any questions on that, we'll certainly give you a chance to ask. We've got the cash balances. That's the next item. It's about two sheets. You can look that over. Still very, very tight, but again, kind of hanging in there, best I can tell. Everything we tried to do to cut costs as well as revenue is maybe inched up a little. You've got the city and county sales tax next, which from the month of August in twenty twenty four, it's up in twenty twenty five. You didn't put an up or down on our total on here, did you just forgot to do that? Okay, let's try to. I mean, you all can add, you can add that up and see if you're up or down for the year.
We're down.
We've been down. We're just a little bit down, which we've been running down. But we are seeing a little bit of a slight bump back up in the sales tax. So the first one's the city, which we get a hundred percent of. And then, of course, the counties on the second page, which we get a percentage of their general tax by state law. All right. And then district court. You can see that. So.
I hope that we approve the financial of revenue and expenditure as presented in the second.
I got a motion in the second to approve the revenues and expenditures report. Is there any question or discussion of that motion? Anybody got any question? I think y'all can read that and pretty well see where we are. But if you've got anything you want to bring up, please do it now. All in favor of approval, show of hands, please. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. That's six in favor. Mayor's report, I will make this extremely brief. I want to tell you, we're working, continue working hard on our industrial recruitment. I still don't have anything I can hang my hat on to tell you that it's done, especially the vital char plant. But we're not giving up on it. We're still working, as well as some other ones. I do want to tell you that I spent a good bit of time, literally today during the noon hour, visiting with Donna down at B C D C, their executive director, and lady with Arkansas Economic Development Commission. We're in the process of trying to get all of our buildings and land that we have on the statewide website. We've got some of it on there, but we've got some more stuff we've got to get put on there because that is a big thing as far as getting our information out there to the whole world and certainly the whole country as far as what we've got available for both land and/or buildings. We've already got the old hardwood flooring mill out there. We don't own that. That's privately owned, but we still got it on the site because they've got it for sale. And we're looking everywhere we can find. Somebody might have an interest in that, not necessarily just for hardwood flooring, but for any type of manufacturing operation that it might be suitable for. And we've also got the, what many of you will remember is the Ladona plant out on Central Street. It's not in the best condition, but there's, it's still there and it's privately owned. We've got that on the site. What we're working on now is to get the new purchase of the hundred-plus acres on the northeast bypass. Of course, there's two sets of property out there. I think everybody knows this. B C D C already had close to fifty acres, no buildings on this. This is just land and then the hundred-plus acres that were just recently purchased, which is in the ownership of B C D C, but it is also leased by the city. And we want to get that on there. And there are, there is a state grant program that's relatively new to help develop industrial sites. And so we're gonna be looking at what we need to do out there on those sites to, you know, either get some more utilities in there or anything else that we need to do. We'll probably need to bring in a consulting engineer to help us see what we can do and how much money we can get to get that further ready for any kind of subdividing or industrial development. And of course, we've still got a ten-acre, roughly ten-acre site out at the other industrial park on the southwest corner of town, which we will also be putting on the site, plus some other privately owned buildings and all that we're, you know, talking to the owners to try to get those on there that we might be able to market. The grant update is pretty much where it's been. We've got an application pending for about six hundred thousand dollars for the cultural center. Just having to wait, I don't know when we'll hear on that. And of course, the Swift Warren City Pool on Rock Street. We've got a grant pending to do a major renovation to that, which we're hoping we'll get both those funded, plus we're looking for some other grants that we might be able to tie into. Any questions, y'all ask? Item three is the, I'm sorry, somebody have a question? Yes, sir, Mr. Toffler.
Well, you know, it's usually industrial development, they come up with their little bullet points. And back when I first started, it was a spec building that you had to have.
Yeah.
Now they done switched around to where it's the infrastructure. So that's the most important part. And I think if we pursue it, we'd be going in the right direction.
I think you're absolutely correct. The state kind of changes their recommendations pretty rapidly on these things. Yes, ma'am.
What's the update on the solar panels?
Work started out there on the land clearing and the fence work to be put up. And they're telling me we should have solar panels installed within the next month to month and a half. Yes, sir.
With all the turmoil going on in Washington, D.C., where do we stand on our rebate?
Right now, I still expect it and am prayerfully hoping that they don't pull the rug out from under us on it. The company that's working with us says we're okay. We got in under the deadline, I guess you'd say, and it's all, all gonna be fine. But I don't count anything anymore till it's done. Okay. This doesn't take any action, council members, but I did want you to see it. This is the memorandum of agreement between U A M, this is item number three, and the city for the use of the Warren shooting range by the college for their shooting, the college shooting team. That facility here in Warren will be, I guess you'd call it their home, home field. That's where they'll be practicing and also we'll be hosting any events that'll be out there. We did item number two on the front page of that agreement. We've rewritten it to set it up on an annual contractual basis because that's not exactly the way they had done it originally. They've come back and set it up kind of on a semester basis for the college, but that falls within our guidelines to be able to do it that way. So it'll be actually the contract, each renewal will be less than a full calendar year, but it will meet our agreement. So I just wanted y'all to see that. We will be executing that tomorrow and sending it back. Just for information. And then item number four, this is a routine annual thing. It would be proposed Resolution A seven oh six to levy a five mil property tax within the city limits of Warren. This is what we already have. This is nothing new. It's just, it has to be done annually. So this is proposed Resolution number A seven oh six. I'm gonna read it to you. And it just takes one reading and to vote on it. And this is then passed on to the quorum court, which levies the mileage for all entities in the city. I mean, excuse me, in the county. A resolution requesting the Bradley County Quorum Court to levy a five mil tax on all taxable property in the city of Warren, Arkansas, be resolved by City Council of Warren, Arkansas, whereas it is determined that a five mil tax levy is necessary for proper financing and operation of city government of Warren, Arkansas. Now therefore be it resolved, the Quorum Court being is hereby requesting to levy a five mil tax on all taxable property in the city of Warren for the use and benefit of said city. And it would be adopted this eighth day of September, twenty twenty five.
I move that we adopt Resolution number A seven oh six. Second.
And I've got a second, I think Councilmember Atkins there on the second. Are there any question or discussion? Again, I will stress, this is not any type of increase. This is exactly what we've had for years, but it has to be done annually. All in favor of approval, show of hands, please. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Okay, that's six in favor. That takes care of that. All right, council members, we got a couple of people signed in to speak. But do y'all have anybody you want to introduce? Yes, ma'am.
Well, actually, mine is a text that I would just like to read from a citizen. And this is coming from Reverend Linda Strong. She says, hi, Alderman Henderson, I pray all is well with you. Heard the conversation that we text earlier about Ford Street connecting to the old Kingsland Road. It has been a month ago, July eighth, no progress. Any updates? Thanks for all that you do, Reverend Linda Strong. And we know that it was a street cut and you have visited with the water department who's going to move forward. So are there any?
They have made an agreement some time ago with the company that's been in here doing paving for us on our, that's our grant for free streets or parked streets that we paved. They, they got all the streets paved and done, and they're gonna move to that. However, they pulled out for about two weeks. We had a long story here, but we had a problem that we didn't anticipate down on Cook and, at Cook and Bradley. So there's a little bit more to be done down there because we had culverts that deteriorated and fell out from under us. And so we had to go in there and fix all that. They're gonna come back and, under the grant, and pave that. And then they're gonna take care of the Ford Street and a couple of other projects in town. Pan Street, for example, over here, it's had a major cut across. And this should be completed. Monty can tell us for sure, but I think they told him they'd be back in two weeks.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
That's, that's where we are.
I will pass it on.
Anybody else have any? One, we, like I said, we got two signed in here. Terrance Roberson. Terrance, would you come forward and may all know you, but introduce yourself and who you represent and make whatever comments you wish to.
Just, just. Hello, I'm Terrance Roberson with the Warren Wolf Pack. And I was saying, can we get the roll closed again while I hang in on the nineteenth?
Okay, the nineteenth of September?
Yes, sir.
Like what y'all done in the past, is that what you're?
Yes.
What, what's the purpose of this?
Well, what we doing is we're getting ready for our Thanksgiving and our tour drive. We use that money to fund that.
So is this a fundraising activity for you, is what you're? And I'm assuming you're talking about again from Central Street to the railroad track, basically?
Yes.
Up there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, council members, they've done this a few times in the past. Wasn't too long ago they did it. But they would need your approval to do it. Of course, we would provide what they need to block it off if you see fit to approve it. I would need a motion. If you got a question, please ask the question. Want to talk about it, but.
From Central to?
The railroad track to the north.
I make a motion to grant them the right to close the street off for the annual meeting.
A second.
Okay. Is there a time period from when to when you're gonna do it?
Usually do it from seven to one.
Seven to one?
Yes.
Okay.
Eight.
Yes, yes, one again. Any question? The motion is?
Were there any issues with it being done previously?
Well, as far as I know, the last time, it hadn't been too many weeks ago that they did one over there, had an activity. And I'm not aware of any, any problems that came from that. I wouldn't want to say we've had some past complaints about racing motorcycles on the street. The park is closed off. And so probably gonna ask you to make sure that don't happen. But, but as far as the other activities, I don't think we've had anything major.
If that is the case, call for the vote.
Okay. All in favor of approval to close it on, you got the date and everything, didn't you? The time? Anybody, if you're ready to vote, all those in favor, a show of hands, please. I see five. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Okay, that's six. We will make arrangements, get y'all everything out there you need to block it all. We appreciate it. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, I've got Mr. Tony Allen with the Primetime Riders event for next month. Tony, come on, step up here. I think they probably know you too, but at least just step up to the podium there in the wood and introduce yourself and again, who you represent.
Hi, my name is Tony Allen. I'm part of the trail rock group in Warren called Primetime Riders. And our CO is Mondrell Thomas. So, let me read it again.
Good.
Hi, my name is Tony Allen. And I'm part of a trail rock group in Warren called Primetime Riders. And our CO is Mondrell Thomas. And I'm his event coordinator in the group. So I, Tony Allen, as the event coordinator for our group, wants to host a domestic violence awareness community walk. And the date and time I chosen is October the twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, at seven a.m. to ten a.m. And our reason for this walk is to bring awareness to women, men, and children that have been through this or come through it. Domestic violence can be physical, emotional, psychological, financial. We want to let the city of Warren and different communities know that there are people and resources out there for help. And that it's never okay to go through this alone. So on behalf of Primetime Riders and myself as the event coordinator for our group, we're asking the city council members and the mayor, find it in y'all hearts to let us have this event. And we want the city of Warren and different communities to join us in this domestic violence awareness community walk. We would like for you to be at the city park in Warren, and it is a free event. Just work together and we can end this other domestic violence.
You're talking about the city park where the locomotive engine is down there, right? But you're all talking about the same thing. Normally, you know, we don't rent the park out, but anybody can use it. And that don't mean somebody else might be down there just with kids playing or whatever, anything like that. But council members, I guess the only question is if you have any objection to them holding that event down there because?
Groups can be down there all the time.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's really no problem with that.
So the walk is just there in the park and not be walking in the city?
No, they gonna be at the city park. Since the city park, that department trail already there, so.
Has anybody got any, any concerns about that?
What's the menu for your moving forward? This is definitely needed.
And we appreciate you letting us know what you want to do because that way we can, you know, all of our employees, first of all, we'll try to have the place cleaned up good. And, and secondly, you know, law enforcement will be aware y'all want to be down there and all that kind of thing in case there's any, any problems. So I'm not gonna ask for a vote. I'm just gonna tell you that it's okay with us, the city council and administration, y'all have the right to go down there and do it.
It's open to the public.
Yes, it's open to the public.
But it is nice of you to let us know about it. I appreciate that personally that you did that because it does help us kind of know what all is going on down there in town.
There are grants for this particular topic.
All right, sir, you got, you got the, the right to go down there and do it.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be put you on our calendar so we know you're gonna be down there, okay?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, no, you, you want to speak?
Yes, I think it's the same.
This is not necessary to introduce yourself anyway, for the record, please.
That's for the record. Good evening, everyone. I'm Janice W. Rochelle. First of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for all that you have done for this great city. And I know there is a lot more that needs to be done. So I am here on behalf of some residents over on Cloquet where I formerly live. I sent Miss Dorothy a text concerning that. I don't know if she's gonna bring it up. But the resident has this one seventeen Cloquet Street. I was waiting until the appropriate. Okay, well, I'll let you do that and I will have my seat. I just want to make sure that it was covered because it's a nuisance. And we're gonna take care of some of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. That was everyone we had signed in, so that'll take care of our public comments. We will move on now to item number seven on your agenda, administrative and standing committee reports. Police chief, I know he's out there somewhere because I saw him earlier. There he comes. Chief, they have got your written report and you are welcome to make any comments. And see if they got any questions.
Yes, I would. Would like to make that in downtown my monthly report for the month of August, twenty twenty five. As you notice, had much change from last month. Statistics are pretty much still the same. The office is still operational, we're still short staffed in patrol. And if you have one, that's the last city council meeting that had started the academy after last week. So we did a second week of the academy. We're anticipating graduation in about eleven weeks and they'll put him to work. That's eleven weeks away, so.
I would add, we're looking for some other possible officers. Of course, we'd love to have the people that are already certified and we can find them. The chief is out beating the bushes looking because if they're certified, they can immediately go to work once they're approved by the civil service commission. But the non-certified have to go to the police academy. That's state law and have to go do that. Anybody got a question for the chief on anything involving law enforcement? I want to make a comment, which I'm sure is not in his report, but I do want y'all and the council to know. I have sent a letter to the county judge, I just want this, everybody to be aware of it, asking him to give us a little bit more detail on the nine-one-one system slash communication center, the dispatch center that we understand they are proposing if the new jail gets funded. That's gotta be voted on, I want everybody to know that. But we are just asking for as much detail as he can give us. Had a few visits with him. One of the committees has had a, had a visit with him about the old plan. And we're still a little bit left wondering, you know, exactly what they're gonna expect if it passes. Bottom line, are they gonna be needing more money from the city in addition to the tax that if it passes? And this is all subject to the passing. So I have put that in writing to him. I think I sent all the council members a copy of it so y'all see what I, what I asked. Since then, I've also had a personal conversation with the sheriff and just make sure he knew I'd sent the letter as well and ask him to please get back with us and try to give us a little bit more detail because this will have a lot of impact, whatever happens about our own budget and our own funding and what, you know, we may have to do or as far as the dispatch, that's what we're talking about. So just want to make sure y'all knew that. Any questions for the chief?
Also, mayor, after the meeting, we asked for a second meeting after they had gone through to figure out, you know, what was going to transpire. So we welcome, the Ways and Means Committee welcomes, they are coming back over for a meeting specifically to deal with that and to hear their presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Chief, anything else?
No.
No questions for the chief? Hang on. Police committee, I don't believe y'all have met. Councilmember Burks-Freder, does anything you need to say or?
I don't think so.
We do need to have a meeting with your committee as soon as we can on some of our issues we're dealing with on trying to hire policemen. I think you're aware of that.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, just let us know as soon as you can. Okay. Thank you. Let's go to the fire chief. Chief Moore. You've got a month and report in there. And chief, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you right now, you make whatever comments you want to. We want a little bit more information on all these pending insurance payments besides just pending because some of them getting little ovals. Look, you kind of update with us where, where we are on that.
I can follow up with them. I got the information. I can follow up with them with that and send them a little.
Well, go, go ahead and give your report and we'll talk about that.
All right, so for the month of August, we had sixteen total calls for fires. We're coming back, had one education call. Had our monthly meeting on August fourth with twenty-four members present. And we had all our air packs and compressor and putting system serviced and everything was okay. And I did put in your seats. On the twenty-seventh of September, we will be partnering with the Red Cross installing smoke alarms. This is something they do in different places. I think they did El Rey the last weekend. But if you know anybody that wants a smoke alarm, have them call the fire station there, two six eight three oh two.
Where do you put them? In any room that the person that you asked of?
It depends on the size of the house. If it's a big house and they need a couple, we'll put a couple in. If it's a small one, we'll probably just put one in the hall or in the bedroom. Just depends on what the situation is. But we'd be getting that.
This is excellent.
We'd be getting that out in the papers and, and we will be, they will bring in volunteers from different places and we'll have our guys, so we'll partner up, be a fireman with a Red Cross person, so. But yeah, if you know anybody.
So these are free?
Yes, sir. Does not cost anything.
And the installation is free?
Yes, sir. All we need is you call and give us your name. Yes, sir. All we need is you call and give us your name and address and we'll follow up the day ahead and make sure you're gonna be, still gonna be there and want it, so.
Excellent project of the normal missionaries.
Uh, will it just be singular purpose, like just smoke detectors or would they detect any other dangerous gas?
It's just smoke alarm, not carbon dioxide, it's just smoke alarm.
Y'all help to spread the word. We'll try to advertise that some too.
And if, if anybody wants to come help install, be the fire station now plus.
Yeah, you have a training session?
Oh, yeah. It'll be a short little, yeah. Just no problem.
They have no time in license books.
Chief, I'm gonna assume there is a limited number of these things or, or do you know?
He did not, he did not give me.
We're gonna flood you out.
He did not give me a number, so. He did not give me a number. He been, he told me to call him when I started getting the numbers.
And y'all help us get the word out and tell anybody and everybody in the city that if they want, uh, to take part in this, we need their name and their, uh, location address, I suppose. And we will certainly try to give them some help on that. I think that's an excellent program and something we need to do.
We got some fires burning throughout the city today.
Everybody burnt today. Phone rang all day.
Do they have a permit?
Oh, yeah. Well, the ones that called did. I don't know about the other ones. But we had a bunch of calls, like every twenty minutes, the phone rang and I could hear it out in there saying, "What's your permit?" "What's your permit?" "What's your permit?" So, I'm sure there were some that worked, so we're still working on that and... By the way, we have everything on computer now, so we've gotten it all put over on, put, put on the computer. Let me get my words straight here.
So what, what program are you using?
I'm not sure. I think it's the next sale program, but we have, we use some of the community service students during the past year and had them in rooms. So now if you come in and you got a permit ten years ago and don't remember it, we can put it up in there, it is, so.
Okay, chief, uh, before you finish, go back to that second sheet there where I think there's several structures and two vehicles. These are the ones that we're trying to collect. These are past fires and that we have filed with their insurance companies. And, uh, you see some of them go back, well, matter of fact, almost all of them go back to twenty twenty-four except for one there. And it says that they do have insurance and shows the insurance company and it says they're all pending. Now, can you tell us what's happened? Do these?
I give the, I give the bill to the homeowner and to the adjuster when they show up. I will get back in touch with them. I've got all that information and copy for that. I'll do it one more time.
Now, do we also send information to their insurance company?
When I can, when I get that, when I have that information. Some of them don't know that then, but I, when the adjuster shows up, I hand in the bill so they have to get a fare report. So, yeah, they're getting it through the adjuster.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna need some kind of system of following up on this because it's pretty obvious at the minimum, some of them are not getting any big hurry about it.
Absolutely.
This is an ordinance of the city that they're required to do this if it's covered, so I would ask you, your office, and if you need any help, you tell us. We need to follow up on these things and once we file it.
Sure.
You know, maybe within a couple of months if something don't happen. And see what's going on, but just, don't let them just ignore us.
Well, I'll send out another, I'll go through them, get in touch with them again and see what's...
Okay.
I can find out.
Seven of them on the list there don't count, right, so we need to follow through on that. Okay, any other questions for the fire chief? Alright, chief. Fire committee, Mr. Tolefree?
Well, first of all, I would just like to say I've been out the state the last two weeks. Uh, I got some very good news. Uh, my son and his family are planning on moving back to Warren, so we're former citizens. He works for the USDA and he has a job in the area. And, uh, his wife is a PRN, so I don't think she'll have a problem finding a job. And so maybe we can get two more in the school system also. And, uh, I'll have enough business this time.
Alright, just out of curiosity, is there any, uh, in your son's job, is there anything he's involved with or can put us in charge? They have some grant programs in USDA, conservation, uh, thinking about several different things that we could use some grant money for. Uh, do you mind asking? Will you know who we might need to call to?
And you very well know yourself, Mayor. The Tolefree family has been involved in grant areas always.
Sure have.
Top to bottom and, uh, I expect that out of them.
If we just know who to contact about something, that'll, that'll.
We gonna work on.
I, I, I know I'm picking at you a little bit, but I'm serious too.
I am too.
There is anybody that we can, uh...
If anybody could do a real true, we can.
There are several, there are several things that we really need some money for. Uh, I can think, I'm off the top of my head, the town branch, uh, but maybe some other places too as far as drainage issues. So anyway, just thought I'd take the chance. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, this was a text that was sent to me and the question was, uh, who is the advisory council for volunteer firefighters? Who are they?
Three volunteers that are elected by the volunteers they have.
It's what it is.
Jerry Ashcraft, Clint Horn, and Josh Belvedere.
Clint Horn?
Yes, ma'am.
Who?
Jerry Ashcraft and Josh Belvedere.
And what's that last name? Josh Belvedere?
Belvedere.
Okay.
I know it, but I can't spell it either, so.
Alright, that answers that question. Thank you. I'll pass it on to the person that asked me to get that information.
Okay, uh, chief, I guess that's it for you, so thank you.
Alright.
Alright, y'all flip the page. Sanitation manager, Mr. Johnson, they've got your, uh, August twenty-five report. Now, at the bottom of it is also a, a matter that we were dealing with, uh, under building official condemnation list out of, out of two, excuse me, new property cleanup component. That's a new one, that's on that same sheet. Go ahead, Rob.
Uh, sanitation report. Y'all have any questions? I'd be glad to, glad to answer.
I want, I want to tell the council that we're, uh, and certainly the sanitation committee, Rob and I have been working almost non-stop on trying to come up with some other possible, uh, ways of going about our garbage collection, not just the one time a week deal, but some other things and trying to cut that cost everywhere we can. We do need to talk to committee about that. We don't have, have time. We don't have anything finalized, but I'd like to at least let you know kind of what we're looking at so y'all can, you know, be aware of that, uh, when the thing comes. Did you have a question, council member?
I just wanted to, uh, I did about the, another text. And the person said they had already visited with you, but it's the houses on, uh, Cloquet where Ms., um, Olamay Briggs, uh, lived in. Apparently homeless people were living in there and then they were removed by the police and then they, they ended up coming, coming back. Do you have an update as to?
We'd send a letter to the owners of the property, yes, ma'am. And then the law took care of the people that were taken up.
But I think they're back again, so, uh...
Okay, these are well-known residents of the community. And, uh, they need special help. I'm gonna tell you that, but we can't seem to be able to get anything done on that.
But we've done all we can do as.
Right now, just, at this stage, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We, we will continue to go remove them if we need to do that. They just need to let us know when they...
Okay.
See them back in there because that's not unusual. They were, these same people, Rob, if I'm correct, they were living in a house over Lee Street, a rental property. They were renting from one of our landlords. The house had a fire a couple weeks or so back. Uh, the day after the fire, they were moving back into the house and it's not livable. And we had to remove them from there. Then I've had two other reports of two other vacant houses that they're staying in. We've removed them from each one of these. But as you say, I'm sure they go back, sneak back in. We still, we still having a problem with people at the city park from time to time. We got a law on that. We are removing them every, every time we can catch them down there. It's not a huge number of people, but it is a steady number of people, same folks over and over again. Okay, uh, Rob, let's see, you get, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tolefree, go ahead.
Okay, uh, just got a comment. Uh, we as the council and you as the mayor try to always enforce cleanup in the city? So, uh, Ms. Rochelle and I, on Thursday morning at eight AM, and anybody else that want to come and help, want to perform a trash pickup on South Watson.
God bless you.
And so we were gonna ask Rob if that'll be in a spot that we could put the trash bags so they can be picked up on Friday. You can think about it.
Friday, Friday actually would be great because that's actually the day we go through there.
That's why we planned it on Thursday.
Any, anywhere we'll be fine, trust me.
Well, we pick up all in the lane, but we just put it with our regular trash.
Well, he's gonna have problems on this one with, with his regular trash because I drove it, I drove it this morning. And I got another call or two from people, but I had personally driven down, well, when I came to see you, Mr. Tolefree.
Yeah.
It is absolutely atrocious. It is probably as bad as I've ever seen. And we've got several places that we have this issue. I'm not just saying it just there, but that one is, and may take the cake on what I've seen on both sides of the road. There's more, there's, there's volumes of garbage and trash been thrown out. We're having some problems over on, uh, Packard Street or Bryant Street north of the school bus operation. That's another one I know of. We cleaned it up about two weeks ago or maybe three. I don't remember. It was pretty bad. We cleaned it up and I will promise y'all in forty-eight hours, it was right back like it was. Yes, ma'am.
How's your staffing?
Uh, I'm sure one, uh, one thrower. But we're, we, uh, we got kind of kicked in the head on, on hire, so we've had a lot of problems keeping people. We've had six in the last five months. So we've just kind of.
It just won't show up?
A walk off the job.
Right there.
Uh, never had that happen before, uh, but I've had the last two just walked off. Uh, so with the ones we're staying with, we're just making it. We're doing, we're doing okay. So it's, it's, uh, we're doing fine right now.
They're working hard, but it is an issue. We had a lot of problems during the severe heat. And I promise you, we tried to address that. I don't want to take all night talking about it, but we kept them loaded with Gatorade water and any kind of break they needed to take any time because it did get bad. It got bad hot. Uh, and that's work. That's, that's a little bit of work out there, so... But, uh, like you said, we're, we are having some issues there, but I think the guys we got that are still there are doing an excellent job and are... Most of them have been with us a while that we currently got still there and they, they should be very good. Good question. Yes, ma'am?
On last week, um, I have a portion, on last week, Robert notes said a truck stopped working?
Yes, ma'am. Had a breakdown over on, on Johnson, I believe.
No, it's on St. James.
St. James.
Oh, because I stay on St. James. And that was the reason for the delay because I had calls about, uh, my trash ain't been picked up and... And I told them that it was a breakdown in.
Yes, ma'am. It did, a very costly breakdown. I got an estimate on it of fourteen thousand dollars, so.
This is not a lease vehicle. This is one we own, but...
But it, it's being repaired and, uh, we've got to have a backup truck regardless whether we have a lease truck or not. We can't afford to let people down. Uh, but, yes, ma'am, it's, it tends to, we run an hour behind when you get phone calls. Uh, I got twenty-six phone calls Thursday before ten AM because one of them wanting to make sure we're gonna run since we were off Monday.
And the volume was up considerably. The next Thursday, we had a big volume day uh, because we didn't pick up on Monday, but that's just part of the way it works.
Hey, what about the, um, the dumpsters, not dumpsters, but the trash bins that...
All the ones we've got ordered?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. They're, they're still telling me to end at September first of October, right now, as they say.
That's the man that yelled.
Right. It's, it's just the volume of the note that we were behind when we ordered ours. There was over a million. We were, we were, they were over a million ordered because of storms, tornadoes and floods. We don't think about stuff like that. They have to reorder, you know, they have to reorder some. Uh, but right now, they hadn't changed their story on when they're coming, so.
Okay. Alright, Rob, again, your report's there. You see the cars still being removed, limbs picked up, junk picked up. Twenty-seven houses where we picked up junk, not garbage, junk, uh, that's been put out. Uh, we've enforced five property cleanups. Trouble is, as Rob and I talk about every week, we clean up four or five and we get out and go around town and we... Twenty-five that we need to be working on. It's just a never-ending process, but we're trying there. We have done some litter pickup. But anybody got any, any question from him on sanitation? We're gonna go to building code next, but anything on sanitation, solid waste. Alright, Rob, let's go on to the building code.
You'll notice on the, uh, building permit issue sheet that I gave you, we're up about ten thousand dollars, almost eleven thousand dollars in fees this year that the town has collected compared to the time last year, not valuation but fees, well, evaluation also, but anyway, uh, that's, that's a plus. And, uh...
Now, we'll shoot through that.
We are, we are getting good cooperation from the people on, on cleaning up, on taking care of the property, along with us helping haul their stuff off, so.
That's building electrical and plumbing permits. Alright, Rob, let's talk about this new property cleanup. That's the one that was listed on your main report there, eight oh-five West Pine.
Yes, sir.
You're bringing that to the council, asking for them to officially vote to order it cleaned up.
Yes.
I move that we put eight oh-five West Pine on the condemnation list.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Can you hold those? Any question or discussion? This means we would start the process, whatever we gotta do, including citations if needed to, uh, try to get the owner of the property, is it Bacon or?
His bacon currently grow up, got a few vehicles in the backyard and, uh, we sent countless letters, uh, we posted the property and we even ran it in the Eagle. Uh, we did all the legal stuff we're supposed to do, so we can, we can go forward if we can catch the person that.
What about down here where Ms. Catherine Gross used to live on the corner of?
Let's hang on. We can have a vote on this motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I'll let you bring that back up, but just we need to, we've, we've got a motion on forward. We need to deal with that. It's okay. Any, any more discussion on the, on the path in West Pine? Alright, the motion is to order a clean to condemnation. All in favor, show of hands. Okay, I see five. Council member Mosley, you still there?
Yes.
You vote yes?
Yes.
Alright, that'd be six, so we're good on that. Council member, uh, Bart Frazier, I'll go back to you now.
I'm sorry, on the corner, is it Van and Cedar? It may not be Van. Where, uh, where Ms. Catherine Gross used to live? Um, it's right across the street from, oh... It's the first, okay, so you go, the stop sign is the first street to the right?
Right. Oh, the first one, Van.
The first one's Van.
Okay, it's Van and Cedar on that corner. There's that house, that yard is about three feet tall.
Yeah, okay. There were a lot of letters sent to that, to Liz Bacon, the guy that lived there, either deceased or left town. We don't know.
I saw them moving everything out and so I, it has been back. I saw them moving everything out and so I, it's been back in the summer, so I didn't know.
The only address I have, however, is the property there.
Okay.
Uh, so it's just going there and coming back. But that's still legal enough, we tried, so that's all we have to do is just make sure.
What, what happens if somebody goes and mows it? Can anything, can they get trespass? Like, if I went and mowed it, could I get... I mean, it looks terrible.
I, I can assure you the city of Warren's not gonna issue you that.
It just looks terrible.
Uh, yeah, it does, and I don't think you can get your money back, you know, like a lien or anything, but you could, I think somebody won't do it.
It won't take you two savings to ride up there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That takes care of that one. Let's go to item three, which is the current condemnation list, it's just added one to it. Uh, we are, uh, getting with the city, uh, not the city, attorney, but the prosecuting attorney. We, we're giving him the, all the documentation on the, the properties that, uh, Penisterville, uh, Phillips Street, and Southern Court. We have made a good bit of progress on Rock Street. Now, I know if you go over and look at it, it's not one of those things you're gonna take a picture of and wanna put in the paper. It's still, the house is in horrible condition. But they have done some work on the cleanup. And I think a few volunteers have been trying to help the gentleman that lives there. So I'm not fixing to issue a citation on that one. Give him a little bit more time. I think he'd be a clean out, his car port, there's still a pile of stuff in the backyard and some of it's been burned. That we'll be getting at about as good as we gonna be able to do unless we tear the house down and the man's living in it, okay? But the other three, we intend to go ahead and file the citations as quick as we can get it on the docket. Get the citations served, uh, to the three property owners. Because we're just not, we're just not getting the... We've had some cooperation, but they do a little bit and they just quit. And they do a little bit and they quit. And, uh, and occasionally a few more stuff, more stuff shows up. So we're gonna proceed with those three and just as fast as we can get the deputy prosecuting attorney to do it. Anybody got any questions for Mr. Johnson on anything else? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Hearnberger, street foreman.
Good evening. We've had a little bit more than normal. We've got, uh, street paving ninety-nine percent complete except for what they're, uh, gonna do to make sure it's rut. Uh, they did have a little problem down on Cook Street, we had to replace the cover, sorry, it would have been any... Uh, we're working on the sound rail, uh, right now, if you're, uh, shoring it up. They've been doing boot hogging, packing trees, digging deep. That's just the way we go.
Has anybody got any questions? Now, I'll remind you all, the street paving, not, not, not the tearing the street breaks that we talked about, the streets that were paving. It's part of Cook, part of South Bradley, and part of Fullerton Street. That was all received, that is a state grant. The city applied for, oh, probably a year or better way back. Finally got it, the state's in charge of that there. They beat it out, they brought the contractor in, the whole thing. All we're doing is just kinda keeping a watch on it. But that should be wrapped up, uh, in the next two weeks along with, while we have them here, we're getting through a couple of other things for us like we, like we talked about. Boyd Street, a few others, these are some of the major street cuts we've had, try to get those fixed. Any questions for Mr. Hearnberger? Just hang around, hon, in case something comes up here. Street committee, Councilmember Mosley's on the, on the phone, however, she's not really up to talking. Uh, so I think Councilmember Atkins, I believe she has asked you to give that report, so I will recognize you.
Thank you. Um, street committee met on September the fourth at five. In attendance was Chairperson Mosley, Mayor Reed, myself, street foreman, um, Monty H- Hearnberger. We had, um, Mr. Mrs. Reed, Rob and Jessica Reed and their children, our mother, Alex, and Mr. Jamie Wolf. Councilmember Tolefree was absent. We've got six items on our agenda. First item was the guidelines for dedication of the streets. We decided to continue to keep that on our agenda and table it till we have a full committee so we can take in consideration the recommendations that the council members made. So we'll keep that there, no action taken. Uh, item number two, the street drainage improvement on the corner of Kelly and Bragg. Uh, you're gonna have to explain it because I can't, and then you can segue into, um, tell them the council about the issues with the town branch, so... Mr. Hearnberger, please.
Well, as everybody knows, the intersection of Kelly and Bragg is very, very narrow. It's, um...
And dangerous.
And, and very dangerous. Uh, we are having some issues of washing underneath the road also. So we have come up with a plan. We're gonna extend the pipe that comes off of Kelly and run it down the Bragg Street ditch. Uh, in case that was, you know, with the gravel, uh, hopefully at some point with some hard surface. And what that would do, that will widen that intersection out and it will make more of a, a sweeping turn instead of a natty right now. Where you just, a school bus has some kinda trouble, a fire truck has a lot of trouble. Uh, and with that underlying, uh, washing out underneath the road is getting pretty dangerous. So we're gonna try to put about twenty-foot pipe extension and then close that up and make it wider and longer. Uh, talk to some contractors around and that. It should be, depending on how much the, uh, concrete that we have to pour. Uh, they could only give me a rough estimate, anywhere from eight to fifteen thousand dollars to do this project. And now that does not include hard surfacing if we decide at some point to put asphalt on it or whatever. But that will make it safer. We put gray rock there on top. Uh, it will make it safer. It will stop the issue of the washing out that we're having. Make it wider. You won't have any problem with the fire truck, amethas, whatever, turning right there.
So we would like to make a motion that we authorize the purchase of the materials, the concrete, whatever else is needed beside the asphalt, asphalt not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Second. Hey, I got a motion and a second to proceed with the project, authorize street department. They'll do most of the work themselves, although we may have to have some help on the pipe. Would not exceed fifteen thousand dollars, which we believe we can do that. Got a motion and a second. Is any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. I see five. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Okay, that's six in favor, so that will give us permission to proceed with that, with that project. Back to you, Councilmember Atkins.
Could you briefly explain to the council, uh, what you share with the committee about the opportunities we have with the town branch?
What we're doing at the town, the town branch, both by Dr. George and the other side, there's more than one location.
Yes, uh, we had a issue at Dr., uh, Dr.'s office that the, uh, water had, uh, cut out from underneath the asphalt or underneath the concrete and was, and threatening to take her fence down as it's eroding. We had to go on there and, uh, put some barricades up, put some, uh, gray rock on there, shovel the ditch up. Uh, the same thing at the Pine and Murgle Street intersection. We done extensive work there last year, uh, but it, uh, it's still, it's still washing further, no, no deep. And so we went in there and in the process there, uh, of cutting that back, sloping it, uh, putting rock on it to stop the erosion there because it was, it's getting, uh, pretty close to the, one of the trees of the, uh, Kingdom Hall property. Uh, it's just, was dangerous. It, we're cutting out underneath also, so we having to slope that back and, and shore that up.
Uh, council might want to know about some of these very extensive projects that the street department is working on with our administration.
I, I still wanna go back to all the studies we've had, the high school studies and other cases, that, uh, we've been fighting this ever since, I don't know for how long. We had that problem with the wire, flood approval, the baseball field. Until we go back upstream and make some adjustments, it's always gonna be a sore spot. As you see, like you said, last year is just, something's gonna keep happening until we address back up the street.
Remember to ask your son about the grant money. I'm just kidding. You're right, you're exactly right, I'm just...
That is the main water issue for the, for the whole community. It starts, you know, over on the west side of the town and it goes all the way between the river as the main one. Uh, it's a lot of water goes through there and water causes damage.
All the way back to Bragg Street?
Yeah.
Going down through the playgrounds, all the way back up to the west side?
It actually starts up, real close to the Bragg-Kelly intersection that we're, that, you know, we often gave it permission to start on.
Okay, I think we're on item three.
Item number three, the road to Washita Top hardwood flooring. So with the new signage, um, the, uh, the issue with the trucks going through the neighborhood has, has almost ceased is what, uh, we are understanding. So at this point, we wanna take it off our agenda because it's working. What, what's, what we got going on is working, so we're not going to pursue that other road, that other route. Yes, Mr. Tolefree.
That would save us a whole lot of headache and money because that route is just two tenths of a mile and the other route would be a mile.
So I'd like to move that we remove item number three from the street committee's agenda.
It's appropriate motion, is there a second?
Second.
Question or discussion? And I've, I've also, before we vote on that, I do wanna mention, I talked to one of, uh, Councilmember Bert Frazier's neighbors literally this morning and I was just asked, you know, you experienced it, have you noticed? He said it's much, much better. He didn't say that anybody tried to sneak through there, but he said it, he, he seemed to be very pleased. And, uh, so hopefully we've done some good on that. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Do I have a vote? Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
All right, so that'll be, that'll come off. Adam four.
Item number four is, uh, a request from a citizen to have a, uh, put two sons on South Martin. Has a child there that is deaf, but we have not had any luck in locating her again or talking to her to ensure that they are still living at that address. So we're gonna leave it on the agenda till we, um, speak back with the parent. Item number five, speed bump on Bond Street. So we had, again, um, Mr. Rob Reed and his wife, Ms. Jessica Reed, and their beautiful little boys come visit or express their concerns about the speeding on Bond Street. Um, when it's in great detail and how she, she really been trying to police it. Uh, but very concerned because it's quite a few students or quite a few children, small children on Bond Street. So we, uh, the committee would like to make a motion that we do put a speed bump on Bond at the location that the street foreman seems appropriate.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, motion.
And it is a recommendation to the committee, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's open for any discussion. This would basically be between, be on Bond Street, uh, between North Walnut and Seminary's and wherever we decide the best place is to be one speed brake, one speed brake.
Do you have to get signatures for that?
She, yes, and she did.
Okay, I figured.
That was submitted to the committee, yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Everybody on the street, uh, saying, yes, ma'am.
It's a short street, really.
Of course, it, Bond goes all the way to Main to the east, so it is a...
But you...
And it's, there's no stop signs that they, on the Bond Street part of the intersection, but... Okay, anybody got any, any discussion of the motion?
I still got a discussion about that because, you know, uh, they go from speed bump to speed bump from zero to sixty. And then to, some of them go in still slow down.
They still don't, they just...
And then some of them still go around in people's yard to try to evade it. I wish you would just somewhere we could step up enforcement and kind of pay for these speed bumps. Because, uh, you know, we have in the past have people that actually petition for us to put them down and they come back and petition for us to take them up.
Well, you're gonna be pleased with item number six.
Okay.
But the concern that she expressed, there's a lot of student drivers cutting down through that street.
Mm-hmm. Just a shortcut.
Yeah, it's a shortcut.
Yeah, enforcement.
So we're talking about from like that corner where the church is, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um...
Enforcement.
To, to slow it down, wherever Monty decides.
Okay, other discussion? You got a motion and a second to authorize the Bond Street speed bump? Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, show of hands, please. I see five. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And you got one more.
Last item, number six, speed bump on Jolly Street. So Jolly is the street that runs in the entrance of the hospital, entrance and exit of the hospital. We had Mr. Jamie Wolf, um, one of the nurses?
His chief nursing officer, yes.
Officer, uh, to visit with the committee and share some concerns from his employees that almost had some near, I won't say death, but it could have been accidents. Because when you walk out the hospital, you walk directly into that street. And so, um, there's so much concern, Councilmember Tolefree, that they are willing to incur the cost or at least some of the costs of the speed bump. But they, he, um, knows that something needs to be done, so we, we talked about, uh, at least one speed bump and two signs to start.
What are the signs gonna say?
Speed bump ahead.
No, okay. If you said at least two signs, I won't...
Speed bump ahead.
Don't hit hard.
I guess, I guess we could put some flashing lights around it.
That, that actually counts more.
So the, the motion is to put a speed bump in signage on Jolly Street.
That would be between, basically between church and central, but it would be down at, at the hospital, right there.
That's on the back side.
It's on the back side, I mean, it really doesn't belong to the street.
Yeah, where they put the airport, where the helicopter landing.
Yeah, that's the...
It is technically the front door now.
Yeah, front door now, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Tolefree, you have it?
I have to wait two questions.
Oh, okay. All right, the motion is just, uh, for them to try to work out the best location to put one speed bump at this point with proper signage coming both directions to try to see if they can slope some of it up a little bit. And still have it to where the, you know, the ambulance can get where it needs to go, that was talked about. And also, uh, where the helicopters laying up on the hill with the, behind the church. Because they are bringing people down on gurneys, you know, back towards on that. So we'll try to take all of that into consideration. Any other discussion? Actually, there will be four signs, not two. We have to have them on each side of the speed bump. Speed bump ahead and speed bump. Are y'all ready to vote?
Yeah, of course.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You know, uh, that particular area, dealing with the Asian people, the people that's hard... You know, that particular area, dealing with the Asian people, the people that's hard, not mobile, and just people just stepping off that thing, the speed bump is not going to deter the speeding. I wish we changed the flow of traffic right there in that area because basically that is the parking lot. And then they have so many other access points around there to where you could take that traffic right out of that door. Because when people come off of that hill and come over the hill to the hospital, they are wide open between that hill and the hospital door right there. There's no path to slow down. And then too, also at the same time, when you have service vans and whatsoever, there's park right there to get patients. That is a blind spot when you come out of that door and walk from behind that van right there into the track. And so the speed bump is not going to cure the problem unless we change the flow of traffic. You know, because like the mayor also stated, when the helicopters come in, they have to block the street off. Then have somebody out there to actually attend that area. And then that's still not taking care of the hazard of the propellers of the helicopter throwing rubbish and trash back this way on that road. And that's the reason for all that, and it's just a dangerous area. And until we address the flow right there, that speed bump is not going to do what we're trying to accomplish.
Mr. Tollfree, are you suggesting making it one way, one direction? You say change the flow, what's your?
At least one way or right there where the parking lot is, when they come back around to go back the other way. Because I've seen other hospitals where they have that yellow crossing walk right there, then there'd be emergency vehicles only right there because there's access on the east side of it and then there's access on the west side by Myrtle. And then also, since we're fixing the other streets up around through there by the clinic, with that parking right there too, there's a lot of access points other than having to come right down through there. If we save one lot, there will be a whole lot. Because this is really dangerous.
Okay, we're still in discussion stage, anybody got any other comment or question? The motion is to approve the one speed bump, that's what's on the floor.
With the four signs.
With the four signs.
Four signs and a bump.
And the, and the, and those, those bump signs that you have there, there's a lot of times that they're ignored or you can't see them if you're looking off. Because even I know there are still there down in Villa, I still forget in my mind that they're there.
And they did want to lower the speed limit.
This is council debate right now, okay. No problem.
What do they have to lower the speed limit? Is it twenty one now?
Oh, no.
They want to go to five.
You're not even moving if you don't find, that's the point. Well, you don't need a street thing.
Okay, council members, any, the motion, you got to act on the motion. If you don't want to do this, you want to look at something else and you.
Did the committee consider?
No, no.
Ottoman, Tollfree has shared.
It would have been great to have that, that they even know we didn't consider that.
You can.
I can receive the motion and we'll keep it on the agenda.
Okay, we need a second to be rescinded also, who rescind, who rescinded the motion? Oh, we haven't had a motion?
That's when I say it, I'm going to wait to the question.
People waited, but no one seconded it.
Forgive me, I'm sorry. All right, so we need to rescind your motion and we'll just leave it on the agenda with further considerations. Okay, everybody good with that? You don't have to vote on that, pulls it out. Okay, I believe that's everything right now, is it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Wagon, we're going to try to speed this thing up here a little bit, so that means go.
Nothing major, except next week we'll be closing parts of the city park with the help of the street department to dig out the workout area and the playground equipment areas to be remoldaging them. So we're going to shut them down periodically, we're working on it with the help of the street department. We do, as of today, have all the lights back working at the city park. We've been having some problems with the wire and some breakers, so as of today, they're all running.
Do we still have any issues with any of our fixtures plugging up the culverts?
Uh, not in, not this week. We had about two weeks, we've had one episode since the last meeting. We dug out some stuff, but we just keep chomping away.
We got a written report.
We've had two, I think the police responded to two calls down there on homeless.
How much money did we make off the game of fish for the free shooting sport money?
I think the contract is.
Yeah, I don't think they have to pay you, do they?
The game official is supposed to take care of the pay, from my understanding.
Right.
Okay, I don't know the answer to that, we'll have to. They may not pay you yet, we may have to.
That's why I was waiting, because when they was advertising and putting it out there for the youth and the bill, and they was saying promoting to come and they would put the bill.
We're going to find out that for you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Wagon? He's got his complete report on the baseball softball complex, city park, train depot, armory, Scobie Drive, tennis courts, senior citizens center, city pool, which of course is closed down. But we're still doing some, trying to clean up that old ball field out there and all this stuff that's grown up around the, you know, some of those backstop and different things that have been put out there over the years. Uh, the old shop update there, the shooting range, the city rent house, we have it rented. He's just got a complete report on that for everybody. And then he's got the usage of the depot. It continues to be our most used facility is for people renting it.
What about tennis courts, we going to do an improvement on that?
Well, we, we've talked to the school several times about if they'd be willing to assist because they use it for, you know, school tennis, they've been so forward that hadn't happened. We thought we would probably try to apply for a grant, but we want to try to get the money. It's the same program that funds the pool. And I want to try to get that done, you know, first and then go back and, you know, with another one to try to, which wouldn't be near as big, by the way, and get that thing repaired. It does need some work.
The school did buy a setup, they have bought new nets for the courts. And we are getting prices on fixing existing lights that got tore down one of the stores. But they have purchased new nets and put up, and what they said after their season, we're supposed to assist to help getting put up. So I told Tollfree we would help, so.
It needs to be resurfaced, Mr. Tollfree, that's one thing, it does need that at some point in the future. Any other questions? Parks and Rec.
On the updates that you gave about the depot with the air conditioner and you found the blockage in the flow of the, of the air conditioner, since you fixed that, since it's been fixed. Do the air, is it more colder in there because some people complain about it don't get cold?
Yeah, when he, when Mr. Wolf came, they added a lot of freon as well to it and, you know, it stayed down. It'll, it'll cool down in the sixties, you know, now, especially with the cooling off that has too. But yes, it, you know, it helped a lot. Yeah, and we just, we found that leak when they put the unit in the attic up there, which for a time it was not up to code. So when that leak come, we found out it wasn't a code, that's why we had to do that.
Other questions? Okay, I think you let's go to our community economic help committee. Council chairman, would you like to make any comments there?
I'm here, I got three on my agenda on the main street property. Want to try to take a look at that piece of day on the main street property. But I just wanted to show you all just an AI vision of, the first page shows the, how the lot looks currently. And then the other two pictures shows of just a basic food court. So I was just trying to show you a inexpensive way that we could set the food court up that wouldn't be so costly. So I just wanted to share that with you all.
Sure. I did, I did want to add, I think it was yesterday, I was doing a little investigation about the individual that indicated some interest in building, you know, something back there. And apparently they are still pursuing that, so I just want you to know that, it's still alive. I don't know what's going to happen, but it is still alive.
Okay, well, we just want to proceed on, you know, encasing down and if it did, we have other properties that could be utilized in the city. But all of this would come, the food court being created, all of this would come after the ordinance, all of this would come after the downtown tree project, so talking probably like 2026. But I just wanted to give you all an idea of how basic it could be and it wouldn't be so costly. Okay, second is the city flag. We had motion to go ahead on and check on sizes and prices and the quality of the flag. And so I just got some samples, I ordered this from Amazon. And this is ideal of how a garden flag would look, which this is not a good copy, but just ideal of the size, you know, you slip it through and they could get the person would place it in like beside their gardens or bushes or whatever, beside their porch. So that's the size we're talking about for the garden size. And the garden size, that's all it leaves to say garden size, they don't really say a size. The second one was a three by five. And just like I say, this is not the quality, we want better quality than this. This is just a sample of the size we're talking about for the flag to be like where you can purchase for your, behind your home or small business or however you want to do it. Because that flag behind you is a whole lot, it's a big flag.
It's great.
And this here is a three by five. So this is kind of like the ideal, was this what we were talking about, like as far as that size in that garden size. And again, these two projects wouldn't come, we won't put it on the table until next year because we want to do this after the downtown tree project is completed. Okay, and last is the ordinance nine seventy. Um, we are still working on ordinance nine seventy. There's some things that still have to be put on and put on the ordinance and it just have to go back and we worked on a little bit more. So we're not ready to present ordinance nine seventy to the truck. That is my report.
Thank you, mayor. All right, Ways and Means, council, council member Henderson, chairperson.
We have two items listed, I do not have any action items. But we would like to, in October, have a meeting with our treasurer. Mayor, if you would, move forward with getting the department head recommendations so that we can start working on the budget and hopefully this year pass it in December. Where are we with the contract with the, for the safe haven? Because I know that the city was.
It's, it's done.
It's done, so does the council?
We're, the fire chief has reviewed it, and I know he's not a lawyer like me, but he's, he's reviewed it and we sent one to the, Ms. Reeve, the student group, so they could look at it, any communication they needed to make with their folks that they've been dealing with, that the contract would be with, as long as they're okay with it, it's ready to go.
Okay, so does the council need to?
Thank you, I've already approved.
We have, but I'm asking doing it to do anything.
I don't think so.
So we're.
I think we can execute it, as long as they're okay with it, we'll, then go ahead and send it in.
I know that the group would like to have it, you know, before the man put this one to the on the board table.
I would hope we signed it and send it off this week.
Sounds great. That is all I have, look forward to meeting next month.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to roll through these reports and businesses, boards, and commissions I had to make because most of them haven't met, Parks and Rec, no meeting. I do have an appointment, I want to, there's a vacancy here or a term, but I want to nominate Nora Pacheco to the Parks and Recreation Commission. That's, that's a nomination I made, but y'all.
And we did ascertain that she's not on any other commission, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I still name this as the Fair, on the Fair Housing Committee.
Is she on there?
I still name on the Community Development and Advisory Committee.
Well, that's, that's a non-functional thing right there. A problem, I'm overlooked at, I'm sorry, she was already on there. On that, let me, can I withdraw that right now and then we'll go back and reconsider that? Because we don't need, she don't need to be serving on two different things. Fair Housing Commission is a, not a very active organization, but it is a technical legal commission of the city, so thank you. I, I thought I glanced over all that, made sure, but I forgot, so I'll just withdraw that right now and we'll come back with that, if that's okay. All right. All right, planning commission, no business, no minutes. Aviation commission, no business. Water and Sewer, you do have their minutes of their last meeting and their finances. And housing authority, no meeting. Cultural Center, that's just the monthly report, of course, no activity going on out there. Unfinished business, nothing. We do have an ordinance that would be proposed, ordinance nine seventy-four. But there's two ways to deal with this. I'm proposing that we adopt this ordinance and up our limits of what we can spend with council approval. This doesn't mean we just go spend anything we want to, but the state has changed their limit to forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars without formal bidding. Ours is thirty-five hundred dollars, three thousand five hundred, ours needs to be increased. This proposal is to make ours twenty-five thousand dollars, not go to the state maximum, but to raise it considerably from thirty-five hundred to twenty-five thousand, where we wouldn't have to, you know, go through the advertising, we could get quotes and things like that, but we wouldn't have to go through the whole advertising. You can submit that to the Ways and Means Committee to consider it, or you can act on it. And if you want to submit it to the committee and let them look at it first, I would have no problem with that.
I make a motion to refer it to the Ways and Means Committee.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second to refer that proposed ordinance to the Ways and Means Committee for discussion and consideration. Is there any question or discussion of the motion? All in favor, show of hands. Council member Moseley?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now, second item, we want to bring this to y'all's attention because our next planned council meeting, scheduled council meeting, would be October the thirteenth. That is Columbus Day. That is Columbus Day, that is a city holiday. City Hall will be closed down. Of course, a lot of city services still be functioning. In the past, sometimes the council, when we run into a situation like this, and wanted to move the meeting to the Tuesday instead of having it on Monday. But it doesn't matter, you can still have it on that, on that holiday if that's what you wish to do. I just wanna call that to your attention. I mean, if you don't take any action, we leave it on the thirteenth. But if you wanna change it, you need to, to vote on it. Anybody got any, any motion to make? Lack of any action, we'll leave it on October the thirteenth. Okay, October thirteenth it is, uh, under announcements, uh, we will mention again, the thirteenth is a holiday for the city, no trash pickup that day. You do have a copy of the bills in your package.
I know that we pay the bills.
Second.
Okay, motion second to pay the bills, any question or discussion on that motion? All in favor, show of hands. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Alright, so that means that our agenda meeting in October will be the ninth of October, and uh what you've got there on the agenda is not correct, it's the thirteenth, okay? No other business, I will call the meeting adjourned. Take care, Rob, see you later.